This hearing as part of the Indiana Code is for the purpose of providing taxpayers the opportunity to make recommendations to the department that administer the tax laws of our state. This hearing is not a news conference or a media opportunity, nor is it a forum to debate Indiana tax laws. Those are established by the Indiana General Assembly. This is an opportunity for the public to suggest improvements in tax services and processing. We are always looking to improve our services to taxpayers, and we are very interested in hearing your ideas and suggestions. We ask for public comments to be submitted to us in advance in order to address those comments today, which is different than previous annual hearings. Due to social distancing, we are holding our annual hearing virtually this year for this effort to put in place not only to keep our team safe, but also our viewers, but also to ensure comments are included in our presentation. However, all comments that were submitted were actually one client situations which have already been addressed offline. We have two guests who will be here today that will be presenting, who plans to make a presentation after our presentation. For those of you that are present with us, once the Commissioner and the Chief Information Officer have done making the comment, we will call you up individually to address our team. When the public presentations are complete, I will read the comments that were previously submitted, which we do not have any, and then allow the Commissioner to provide an additional response. At this time, it is my pleasure to introduce Commissioner of the Indiana Department of Revenue, Bob Gurness.
Good morning. Good morning. Good morning and happy Friday. So on behalf of the over 700 team members of the Department of Revenue, I welcome all of you to the 2020 Indiana Department of Revenue hearing. My name is Bob Gurness, and I'm serving for three years as the agency's Chief Operating Officer. As of February 1st of this year, I am honored to now serve as the Commissioner. While this public hearing is a formal opportunity to provide feedback, as Emily shared, this is in no way the only opportunity to promote this feedback and connect with our team. One of our core values is continuous improvement. Feedback is the key ingredient to that improvement work. There are many ways to connect with us throughout the year, and we welcome the opportunity to capture your feedback and work together. Our website contains contact information for all of our executives and every business unit, so you can easily get to the people you need and get the help you require. Our website also contains an easy-to-use customer feedback portal that provides a fast and easy way to provide feedback, share an idea, report a concern, or request assistance. We believe feedback is the breakfast of champions, and we love it when we get it and we thank you when we do receive it from you. As Emily mentioned, we are in a bit of a different setting today. We conduct a mostly virtual meeting. We have a few individuals present with us, and we have a lot of folks watching our livestream. We appreciate all of you for your interest and for being here today. So a few announcements of the folks that are in the room, that are on the senior team. We have very few folks here because of our proper social distancing procedures, but with me today is Emily Boson, who has already spoken. She is our Chief Communications Officer. Chris Russell is here. He is our Special Counsel and Policy Director. Dwayne Brinson, our Revenue Inspector General. Sita Mulabashi, who is our General Counsel, and Kevin Gully, who will be speaking in a moment, is our Chief Information Officer. We have a few other folks from the team here, but again, we have a very small crowd today. After my opening remarks and update, Kevin Gully will be giving a quick update on Project Next Door, which is our once-in-a-generation modernization of our tax systems and all of our operations. So I want to start by giving a quick shout-out for two of our guests that are here today, Patrick Thomas from the Notre Dame Tax Clinic and Philip Jackson from the CPA Society. Both Patrick and Philip are members of our Tax Advisory Council and have been wonderful partners assisting us on our improvement journey. Through many meetings, discussions, and working sessions with Patrick, Philip, and many of their colleagues, we have identified and implemented a number of important improvements to our systems, processes, and procedures. While we all recognize that improvements never end, and we will not always agree, we have come a very long way together. These gentlemen and their colleagues are experts in their fields and passionate advocates for Hoosiers. They have truly helped us improve tax administration and our services to Hoosiers across the state. We thank them for being here, for being great partners, and we look forward to continuing to work together. So over the last three years, the Department of Revenue team has embarked on a journey to pretty much re-engineer everything: our mission, our vision, our core values, our culture, our relationships with all of our stakeholders, and our service delivery operations. And while operating this very high-volume, high-variability, and high-complexity agency, we also went to work to build the organizational capability to replace our 25-year-old legacy systems, as well as modernize our service operations so that we could introduce a new level of service to Hoosier taxpayers. This work has been exciting, rewarding, and exhausting. It also never ends, but we have come a very long way, and we are so proud of our progress. While living our mission to serve Indiana by administering tax laws in a fair, secure, and efficient manner, we have stayed keenly focused on our aspirational vision: to be the premier tax administrator in the nation and a great place to work. And we are very proud of those results. Many of our programs, including our ID Protection and Fraud Prevention, Motor Carrier Services, data privacy and security, and communication, just to name a few, are being recognized as industry leaders. Just last month, the Federation of Tax Administrators, who is our industry association, honored the Department of Revenue with two awards: recognizing our commitment to data security and privacy training, and employee communication. These awards follow last year's FTA recognition for our employee engagement, and awards for customer feedback and community volunteer programs. And just last Sunday, the Indianapolis Star announced that the Department of Revenue had been awarded the prestigious Top Workplaces Award for the second straight year. This award is based on our team's anonymous feedback on organizational commitment, communication, motivation, and leadership. Being the first Indiana state agency to win this prestigious award in 2019 was amazing. Winning it again in 2020 is pretty special. Our team cares deeply about the important work we do and the Hoosiers we serve, but we also care about each other and our work environment. DORE is a pretty special place, and we are so proud to be recognized by our peers and industry leaders. So DORE is a very large and complex organization that has many interwoven parts. I would like to invite everyone to visit our website, which is in.gov/door, where you can learn about all the work that we do and that we complete every day. We invest heavily in keeping this website full of current and valuable information and helpful tools. This site, along with our tax bulletin, weekly blog, agency announcements, and social media, are excellent ways to stay up to date and connected to everything happening at the Department of Revenue. And by statute, we are required to submit an annual report to the Governor by October 1st of every year. We are currently drafting our Fiscal Year 20 report, which will provide a wide variety of important statistics and information and tell the story about fiscal year 20. But I want to highlight a few things that have happened in the last fiscal year here today. So, believe it or not, fiscal year 20 closes in just four days. We are rolling through individual tax season and closing in on processing a total of $19 billion for the 65 tax types that we administer. We are fully supporting the Governor's Office, the Office of Management and Budget, the State Budget Agency, and all of the agencies that are tackling the COVID pandemic and all of the challenges from that pandemic. While in this together is may seem like just a slogan, it has truly been and will continue to be our guiding principle through this crisis. One of our most significant accomplishments the past fiscal year was the successful implementation of the first rollout of Project Next Door and the new Indiana Integrated Tax System. And the first rollout was implemented in September of 2019. This rollout included all the functionality associated with corporate taxes, and included the launch of the first-ever state-of-the-art customer portal we call Intime, which is the Indiana Tax Information Management Engine. Kevin will be providing a lot of information about Project Next Door and highlighting Intime. Last year, our policy team also successfully supported the Governor Holcomb's administration and the Indiana General Assembly before, during, and after the 2020 legislative session to address important tax law topics. And you can read about all of that amazing work in our 2020 legislative synopsis, which is published on our website. Last year, we successfully designed and executed a very complex conversion to a new outside collection agency, United Collection Bureau in Jefferson, Indiana. This transition has gone extremely well and will be fully operational starting in July. And we continued our commitment to positive collaboration through business outreach and education, and working with key partners and Hoosiers across the state. We also continue to nurture our customer-centric and employee-focused culture through engaged leadership, training, numerous improvement projects, enhanced metrics, and customer service recognition programs. So we're in the middle of individual tax season, which is always an exciting time. We administer 65 tax types, and we have a lot of different tax seasons, but the individual tax season is the most major period of time where we serve all of our Hoosiers. So as we get ready to wrap that up, it has been a tax season like no other. Due to the COVID pandemic, Indiana extended the individual tax filing and payment dates from April 15th to July 15th. And our team quickly implemented parameters to continue running all of the department operations, including processing returns, posting payments, issuing refunds, and providing best-in-class customer service. As of this week, we have processed over 2.9 million tax returns, and we've issued over 1.9 million refunds. Reflecting the extended filing date, this volume is a little behind normal, but we're already at 90% of the returns and 93% of the refunds that we would normally expect this time. 89% of the returns so far have been filed electronically, and if an electronic return resulted in a refund, 93% of those refunds were issued in under 14 days. Our industry-leading service level goal is 90% within 14 days, and we are exceeding that. Over 103,000 of those electronic returns were filed using the Indiana Free File Program. It's a 16% increase over 2019. This is great news for Hoosiers who qualify for this free filing program, and it's a program we've worked very hard, along with the IRS, to promote. So 11% of the returns have been filed via paper. Our industry-leading goal to get paper refunds out the door is 90% within 60 days. We have been 98% within 60 days, and 81% of the refunds generated from a paper return and filed have been issued in 30 days. And our customer service team has knocked it out of the park during this tax season, answering over 323,000 calls at record-setting performance. Over the last two months, our answer rate has exceeded 95% with an average hold time under two minutes. Hold times for specialty lines like our ID Protection and Tax Practitioner Service Lines have been well under that. Our fault quality and customer satisfaction survey results are setting record. We've seen some as high as 100% and consistently above 85%. And at the same time, our ID Protection and Fraud Team have continued to stay ahead of bad actors that are trying to steal Hoosier IDs and tax refunds. So far this year, our Fraud Analytics Program has analyzed all 2.9 million returns that have been filed so far, and over 4 million Hoosier identifications. And we've stopped 9.5 million of refund fraud and over 900 Hoosier IDs that have been trying to be stolen. We take protecting Hoosier IDs and refunds very seriously, and our industry-leading program continues to perform superbly. So let me wrap up my comments with just saying a few things about the COVID crisis. Like every organization, we have spent the last four months learning, assessing, and taking action using the best information available to us. While closely following the guidance of Governor Holcomb and the Indiana State Department of Health, we have focused on three things. First was the safety of our team members and our customers. We quickly took action to close in-person services and shift all of our service operations to serve Hoosiers without them having to come to our offices. We transitioned many jobs to home work locations, and we implemented safety procedures for all the job functions that were required to stay on-site. Second, we doubled down on our commitment to serve Indiana and the Hoosiers that count on us. As the agency that is responsible for processing all the state's tax revenue and serving millions of Hoosiers and hundreds of thousands of business and corporations that needed us now more than ever, we needed to figure out how to keep this agency firing on all cylinders, and that was no easy task. And finally, we said, "We're going to go to work and find ways to help Hoosiers through this unprecedented time," which we did by ensuring we continued to run the agency, which across the country, some agencies were not able to do that. And we had to process returns and issue refunds while providing empathetic and high-quality customer service. We also had to swiftly implement these filing and payment extensions and develop a wide variety of relief efforts that we outlined in our Helping Hoosiers program, which is published on our website. And as I've shared with you today, our team's performance throughout this pandemic has been nothing short of outstanding. Teamwork, communication, a can-do spirit, and collaboration internally and with all of our partners has been the key to our success. Every organization will be changed by this pandemic. We are supremely confident that we are going to emerge stronger and ready to continue providing great government service to Hoosiers and writing our success story together. Thank you again for all being here. I'm now going to turn it over to Kevin Gully, who is going to give you an update on Project Next Door.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm Kevin Gully, the Chief Information Officer for the Department of Revenue. Thank you for attending today's annual hearing and allowing me the opportunity to provide you with some background and an update regarding the department's transformational project, Project Next Door. First, a little background on the project. In 2017, the Department of Revenue embarked on a journey to transform the agency. It started with a disciplined request for proposal and assessment process, which in turn led to the selection of our transition partner, Fast Enterprises. Fast Enterprises is the leader in the revenue administration system industry and has successfully implemented in over 26 states. The project will eventually take how all our Hoosier taxpayers file, pay, and view their information to the next level. The current tax administration system has been in place for over 25 years and presents many operational challenges and limitations for both the department and our customers. The key features of the new system upon completion will include an enhanced online customer-facing portal to allow Hoosiers to view their information, electronic filing of tax returns, and certain payments, the ability to file amended returns electronically, and request tax transcripts, and a host of other operational benefits. The implementation portion of the project started in August of 2018 and was planned over the next 47 months. It consists of four rollouts. Each rollout is approximately 12 months in duration. The first rollout launched in September of 2019 and consisted of eight tax types, including the corporate, partnership, and S-corporation tax types. The second rollout is scheduled for this September and consists of 13 tax types, including the trust suite of taxes like sales, withholding, food and beverage, and the county and county per set of taxes. The third rollout consists of 13 tax types, including the individual, gaming access, and a host of wagering taxes. The fourth rollout consists of 18 tax types, including the special taxes like cigarette, other tobacco products, alcohol, and the fuel tax set. The current Project Next Door team consists of dedicated Department of Resource and Fast Enterprises teammates. The Fast Team members have relocated to the Hoosier state, and the team was co-located within our agency in order to develop the necessary relationships that are vital to successfully deliver a project of this magnitude. These relationships have enabled the team to continue to be successful during the recent remote work challenges that we all have faced. Since our last public hearing, we have achieved several milestones. The first rollout, the corporate taxes, was implemented on time and on budget in September Labor Day of 2019. Rollout 1 featured the department's new self-service online portal, the Indiana Taxpayer Information Management Engine, also known as Intime. Rollout 2, the trust taxes, is targeted to go live September of 2020. We are currently focused on the testing, training, and conversion activities, and this rollout is right on plan. Rollout 3, the individual and wagering taxes, is targeted to go live September of 2021. And Rollout 4, the special taxes, is targeted to go live August of 2022. In closing, Project Next Door represents a major technological upgrade to our core administrative systems, and it enables an effective platform for us to deliver great government service. This once-in-a-generation opportunity will completely transform the agency and properly position the department for the years and changes to come. Thanks for your time, Emily.
All right, our first speaker will be Philip Jackson with the Indiana CPA Society. So Philip, if you want to come on up to the microphone.
Thank you, Emily. Just to begin, I want to say for Commissioner Gurness and the Department of Revenue team, I want to thank you for the comments and allowing us to comment here today. My name is Philip Jackson, a Chair for the Indiana CPA Society's Tax Resource Advisory Council, and CPA Tax Manager at LM Henderson Company in Indianapolis. As you know, I also have the privilege of serving on the Commissioner's Tax Advisory Council. Last year at this meeting, I was congratulating Commissioner Krupp and you as Chief Operating Officer on being the first state agency to be named one of IndyStar's top workplaces for 2019. As I prepare for today's comments, we received an announcement that Department of Revenue was once again recognized as a top workplace for 2020. So once again, congratulations to you, now Commissioner Gurness, and the over 700 DOR staff team for continuing the same legacy. In February of this year, we were pleased to learn that you have been tapped by Governor Holcomb to lead the department as the new Commissioner. We entered a challenging tax season, to say the least, knowing we would work closely with you to troubleshoot and resolve any related issues that arose. Little did any of us know that within a month of your appointment, our worlds would be completely uprooted in the face of a global pandemic. Our longstanding relationship built on mutual trust and respect proved invaluable as the state and federal governments began to shut down if businesses and Hoosiers followed stay-at-home orders for what we hoped would be a short time. As essential service providers, our member CPA's quickly pivoted to help all types of businesses, industries, CPA tax practices, audit and consulting firms, institutions of education, and governments close the doors while keeping an eye on preserving a viable future. You two were suddenly challenged to transition over 700 employees to work remotely, just as tax season was getting underway. We appreciate your outreach and dedicated continued response to the society on issues affecting both the state's fiscal ability and all Indiana taxpayers. Amidst the uncertainty of the Congress drafting and approving a CARES Act and Families' First Coronavirus Response Act, and the federal government implementing provisions and programs, we found the Department of Revenue to be in lockstep with our request for conformity at the state level. In fact, Indiana was a leader by extending due dates for payments and filing due dates for individuals and corporations. Taxpayers benefited, but may not be aware of the work and planning across multiple state agencies and the Governor's Office that went into extending these due dates and the second quarter estimated tax payments, as well as other considerations such as determining treatment of triple P loan forgiveness as income. As we emerge from this health crisis, we know it must acknowledge that there will be some confusion and issues to address as a result of these changes. Continued transparency about any systematic problems, the high level of over-communication to practitioners. The business community and taxpayers will serve to expedite accurate filings and resolutions. We committed to working through issues with you and discussing the need for troubleshooting and resolution of specific issues. We anticipate the need for taxpayers and practitioners to have dedicated customer service representatives at specialized knowledge and authority level to quickly resolve complex tax situations. As the economy recovers, the state will need to plan for the inevitable income recalls and timing challenges of 2020. We encourage you to draw on the expertise and support of our members as trusted business advisors. We anticipate the need for our members to work with elected leaders of the General Assembly, other business organizations, and state agencies to help overcome obstacles to Indiana emerging financially sound, economically stable, and with a strong positive environment for business. We join you in continued support of sound tax policy that aids economic recovery and ensures ongoing success for Indiana taxpayers. And finally, modernizing the state's tax system has been long overdue and a long time coming, but we are nonetheless happy to mark incremental progress each year. Given the challenges of 2020, I am sure it was no small task to maintain the timeline and continue work on Project Next Door, readying for a September 8th rollout of Phase 2. We trust the task of mitigating business customers with sales and withholding obligations from in-tax to the new e-services portal, Intime, and getting businesses on the Intime portal will go smoothly. Thanks to the Department of Revenue's vision and well-thought-out four-phase plan and the General Assembly's funding approval to overhaul the system. All Indiana taxpayers benefit from this investment, a modernized tax system. On behalf of the nearly 7,000 members of CPA's and accounting professionals who are transforming business in Indiana, I extend my sincere thanks to you and your team at Indiana Department of Revenue for your considerable efforts and service to the Indiana taxpayers. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Philip. And next we have Patrick Thomas with the Notre Dame Tax Clinic.
Thank you, Emily, and thanks, Bob, again, for allowing us to be here today. Thank you, Philip, for your comments. I largely agree with almost all of them. So I'm Patrick Thomas. I'm an Associate Clinical Professor at the Notre Dame Law School and the Director of the Tax Clinic of the Law School. I've also had the pleasure to serve on the Commissioner's Advisory Council now for the past almost two and a half years, where we have indeed made some great changes, I would say, to the department's operations over the last three years. So as we have done for the past, I think now this is the fourth public hearing, we, and when I say "we," I mean myself, my clinic, and Indiana Legal Services, local taxpayer clinic, we have submitted comments to the Commissioner and the department for this hearing for them to consider. And these comments identify the most serious issues that we see. that we see in tax administration in Indiana as it affects low-income taxpayers, which are the taxpayers that our clinics serve. So this year, myself, another new member of the Commissioner's Advisory Council, Karen Moore, the director of the clinic at Indiana Legal Services, and my research assistant, Zara Masnasser, who definitely deserves a shout-out here today, composed this report for this year. This report identifies nine issues that we see as the most serious issues that the department needs to address in the coming year, over the coming years. Don't worry, there's good news and ad-voys coming your way too. But I do want to address some of the issues that we've identified this year. So as I said, we've identified nine. Some of these are recurring themes. Some of these are new. But this year, we pay special attention to a number of issues. Primarily, we focus on the department's policies and procedures regarding its offering compromise and financial hardship programs within the Taxpayer Act in office. We've talked about these issues for years now, I know, Bob's nodding. And some substantial improvements have been made. But in our view, there were so many issues that we had had to deal with over the past few years that it often became difficult to disentangle one issue from another. So we really set forth a challenge to ourselves to identify with specificity the clear and serious issues that exist in this program, and they are two, as we see them. The first issue is the failure to publish the guidelines that the department uses to consider offer and compromise and financial hardship applications. The second is those guidelines, unarticulated though they may be, we view them as substantively misguided. And I do want to talk about that in some depth here today. This report's a little long, so let me get to the right page. All right. So as mentioned, the first problem is a failure to publish guidelines. And I know we've heard about this issue before in our advisory council sessions, not only from me or Karen or Frank from Indiana Legal Services, but from other practitioners. And the primary issue here is not that the department does not say, well, here's what we will consider. For example, you have a form that requests information about a taxpayer's financial situation, requests asset information, income, expenses, all of that good stuff. And some significant progress has been made in that regard, where before we had to submit receipts of every grocery bill and utility statement to prove a taxpayer was indeed spending money on these expenses. Now the department allows us to rely on some of the IRS's national expense standards that they do significant work to promulgate and update every year. And we appreciate that effort because it does cut down on the paperwork for practitioners and for the department and for taxpayers. But you don't tell us how you consider that information. So, and that's the key difference. That is, we have experienced many cases where even under these new policies, we'll have proved that someone does just does not have the income or the assets to make a payment on their state income taxes or their federal income taxes for that matter. And I think the department's agreed with us. But rather than stopping throwing good money after bad, the department has essentially put our taxpayers into a state of limbo, where they get placed into a financial hardship status indefinitely. And they just kind of hang out there for years, for months or years, even. And I think we have to think about what that does to a person when we have the specter of the government always lurking behind them, there, ready to jump out at some point that they don't know. And I don't think that's good for Hoosiers. I don't think that's good for the department from a financial standpoint. And so what we're talking about here is the idea that, first, again, you need to tell us how you're going to consider this information. For example, you know, do you have a policy that we're going to consider how much you offer and compare that to the amount owed? And if it's too low, we're going to say, no, no, go sit over there in financial hardship status. Or are we actually going to consider the ability of someone to pay the tax debt? We don't know. We don't know. We only know that from our experience. When we asked for the policy, we have been told, well, we can't give that to you. And so that's been frustrating, and that's why concurrently with this report, I have submitted a request under the Access to Public Records Act for that policy written. And I hope that the department will comply with that request forthwith. The second issue in this broader issue is what the policies are themselves and the idea that they are, in our view, misguided. They are, in our experience, with the cases we've worked, often arbitrary, ad hoc, and just simply don't make a whole lot of sense, given the cases that we're working on. And I want to share today a couple of examples. And full disclosure, these come from the Indiana Legal Services loan from taxpayer clinic. So one example, and we identify both of these in the report for when you take a look at it. But one of these clients incurred a state tax debt of $2,500 because she had to cash out her retirement accounts because she was suffering breast cancer. She used these distributions to purchase an old mobile home and an old sedan, over 200,000 miles on it. She doesn't work. She can't work anymore. It's a medical condition. And her application for social security disability is ten. She lives with her 22-year-old daughter, who works as a grocery store clerk for about $17,000 a year. So that's it. That's their family's income. They live together in the mobile home. The daughter pays all the taxpayer's expenses, including the lot rent. The taxpayer doesn't expect to go back to the workforce, but isn't going to reach retirement age for over 15 years. She submitted an offer and compromise to settle her tax debt for $5 because she had no ability to pay at all. The taxpayer advocate office came back and said, how about you give us $1,200? Okay, where do we get that from? Do we sell the mobile home? Do we sell the car? Do we sell these necessities of life that these taxpayers have? I don't think that's a reasonable thing to ask these folks to do. I also don't think it's reasonable to ask them to sit in this sort of purgatory for year after year, especially given the dire circumstances that led this taxpayer to this position. And this is not atypical of our cases, as you know. This is fairly common, a fairly common situation. Not all of our clients are asking for relief from the taxpayer advocate office. But those that do are often in situations like this, and certainly my clinic has their fair share as well. So our charge to you would be to rethink this policy after you publish it, what it actually is right now, but to rethink it as we think you should, to focus on the things that matter, the taxpayer's ability to pay. Because really, that's all that matters in trying to settle the debt, is how much can that person reasonably come up with? And if it's nothing, then, well, there's probably a way they can scrounge up 50 bucks to settle the debt, right? That is another thing I should mention. One of the TAO's policies has been to reject offers for anyone who has demonstrated that they have a negative net monthly income because they say, well, you can't afford to pay that $10 that you offered us. So we're going to reject your offer. That explanation orders on pretext and is arbitrary. I know there's a real reason lurking behind it, but that's enough there. So that's the main issue that we focus on in this report. And we provide a lot of background and sort of the the policy reasons why the department ought to implement these policies, including those that were considered by Congress when it mandated the IRS implement these very same policies in 1998 in the IRS Reform Act. And so I would commend that to you to read. I will very, very briefly touch on a couple other issues that we identify in the report. Very quick hits, please consider copying those on correspondence. I know we've talked about this forever, but it's tough not to be alerted when our client gets a bill. And please continue when you were rolling out the Next Door option for individual taxpayers to include a detailed payment history for our taxpayers that we see. I have been promised that that's coming, and I presume it is, but it's so important, it's in there as well. We also have a section on return filing complexity. As you may know, the IRS's relationship with Free File Incorporated has changed a little bit in the last year due to some investigative reporting about the practices of some of the companies who are participants in Free File. And as you know, the state departments of revenue accept this memorandum of understanding between the IRS and Free File on kind of a take-it-or-leave-it basis, so your relationship with Free File has changed as well. I continue to believe, as do my co-authors, that the department should explore a public filing option for taxpayers, a different model than Free File has, but I think that has to be kind of on the long-term radar. In recent days, it's emerged that one of the largest providers in Free File, H&R Block, is dropping out of the program next year. So that does make one wonder about the long-term longevity, let's say, of the Free File program with launch. Additionally, and I'll again give a shout-out to my research assistant for this section, we identify some of the issues with the department's notices, specifically the proposed assessment, ARAD notice, the demand notice for payments, and what we term the math error notice that reportedly seeks to correct a 2 plus 2 equals 5 issue on return, but in reality does much more than that. So these issues relate both to the communication in the notice itself, which has improved somewhat over the past few years, but there's room to go there. But also the functional use of the notices. I continue to worry, especially in the math error notice where the department is making numerical adjustments that it is not following the Indiana code in issuing a subsequent proposed assessment or a denial of refund claim. And we all like to follow the Indiana code, right? So let's look at that issue, and I'm happy to have further conversations about that after you have a chance to read the report. We also highlight some issues regarding the vehicle lien release procedure and identify some ways that the department might better collaborate with the Bureau of Vehicles in streamlining that procedure. I think there's room for a win-win there in terms of streamlining the procedure for both the department and for taxpayers and for the BME. Right now, it's a little hampered. So something to take a look at. And then just three other issues, so two of which I'll talk about collectively, the innocent spouse and injured spouse procedures. Not to get too far into the details, but the department, I continue, this was one of the things we talked about last year, but the Indiana code clearly states that assessments for joint taxpayers should be separate assessments. The department continues to treat them as joint assessments and collect them jointly. And that's, again, it's simply something that the Indiana code does not allow for, and once we find a case to bring it up, we will bring it up. The injured spouse procedure is a little different. There, we're dealing with where some spouses are getting a joint tax refund, and one of the spouses owes a separate debt. So part of that refund is a whole refund to pay that debt. And there can be some relief provisions, and there are in the Indiana code, for that injured spouse. And again, I think the department has some work to do in streamlining those procedures. I know this is something we have worked on and has gotten better over the past few months and years, but there is some work to do. One of the things I'll just mention that can be a little confusing for taxpayers is that the department complates the terms innocent and injured spouse a little bit differently than how the IRS addresses them. And so when taxpayers are used to one thing at the federal level, which they're still probably going through, because if you're going through that situation with the state, it's likely it's at the federal level too. So just a nomenclature issue there that you may want to take a look at. But also, we have some suggestions for streamlining these procedures. Again, I think it's something that could represent a win-win for the department and for taxpayers. Finally, a new issue for this year regards sheriff tax warrant notices. And this is a perennial issue we see in the clinic. What brings people to the clinic is they say, oh, my God, I got a notice from the sheriff. I'm going to jail. And we have to say, no, 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 you're not going to jail. The sheriff is charged with colluding on a tax warrant and yada, yada, yada. And they sort of calm down. But it sort of freaks people out. And each sheriff's notice is a little bit different because we have 90 different counties. And so we've recommended that the department adopt some guidelines for either a standard format of one of these notices or some statements that could be included in each notice. So for example, some notices affirmatively state, this is not an arrest warrant. Or some do not. And so that might be a helpful thing to have included on these notices. So it's clearly alerting the taxpayer, but they don't think that they're going to jail because they're not. So take a look at that and all of these recommendations. And I'm glad to have subsequent conversations about them during the course of the next year. I did promise some good comments and ad-voys, so I will provide those now. I do really, just from the bottom of my heart, do want to thank the department for the actions it's taken in response to the COVID-19 pandemic this year. I echo Phil's comments in that not only did you follow what the IRS was doing, in certain instances, you left. And you went either faster than the IRS or above and beyond what they did. And I just want to tell a brief story about the early And I just want to tell a brief story about the early heady days of the pandemic. I was driving back from Washington, DC. It was about March 15th, and I thought, you know, it was that time where basketball had been canceled, and, you know, it was really getting serious. Rest stops in Ohio didn't have any chairs or, you know, it was a strange time. And I got to thinking, you know, gosh, there are all these layoffs that are going to happen. I'm going to have a lot of cases. I'm going to have a lot of cases that are going to have to bring Tammy in the taxpayer advocate office and say, "Oh, gosh, hold on on this payment plan, this garnishment, this levy, you know, taxpayers don't have a job or their hours have been reduced." And so I got to thinking, you know, we've got to figure out some way to address this systematically. And so I was able to call up Jim Overmeyer, the Director of Collections, and he was gracious enough to have a long conversation with me about his concerns, took them very seriously, and agreed that some sort of systemic action had to happen. And very quickly, I mean, within the next week or so, it did. And it did to a level, as I said, that not even the IRS did. So active levy cases, as you've published, have been recalled. And that was just so critical to providing Hoosiers the relief they needed during these times. So I really do want to commend the department on that. Thank you. Look forward to working with you over the next year.
So before we close, I want to thank you very much, Patrick. Thank you for all your detailed research. But we look forward to looking into the whole report and continuing to work with you. As you mentioned, many of the things are on the plate already. Some of those enhancements that you have been sponsoring for some time are part of Project Next Door and will be introduced as we roll out the project and we will continue working with that with you and your team. We thank you both very much for your comments. We thank everybody for being here, and we look forward to staying on our continuous improvement engine. So with that, I'll turn to Patrick.
Okay, just one last note. Thank you for everyone for tuning in and for those that were able to attend. We will be posting the full report and video of today's hearing online, which will be on Monday, June 29th. Thank you again, and this concludes our 2020 Annual Hearing. Thank you, everyone.